My big clumsy fingers. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to Tuesday, April 18th. The town meeting starting at 6:04, is it? 6:05, and we will open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to thank everybody that's here in person and everybody that's on Zoom joining us this evening. Ah, let's see, so, call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, scheduled business. Is there any public comments from the public in person or via Zoom that would like to say anything prior to the meeting? I see no hands or nothing up on the screen. Nobody's come up on the audience. So, um, we will go right to the Police Department's Special Rate Suggestion Increase. Chief Jewett, if you would be so kind, please.
My apologies, I wasn't listening. Which one is this?
Special Detail Rate.
Oh, the Special Detail Rate. I grabbed the wrong paperwork.
And we'll be doing the Cruiser right afterward, so if you want to just bring them all up.
Is that a hand up?
Okay.
All right, so for the Special Detail Account, as the Board is aware, every so many years we come back and we look at the, um, the amount of how much we charge for details. The Special Details for companies like Unitil, gas companies, whoever's coming in town to do work, um, we charge an officer's fee, we charge an admin fee and a Cruiser fee. What I gave you guys last week was a breakdown of all of the area PDs and what they charge for their officer rate, Cruiser fee and admin fee. I'm not going to go through them all because you guys have them. Um, what I'm looking to do is increase our rate, um, both the, um, Cruiser fee, admin fee and the officer's fee. Um, what that would help us do is keep us current with the other towns that come in. Uh, sometimes we can't fill our details, uh, so another town may come in and it makes it hard that if we have a Newton officer on the detail on South Main Street, but I also have an East Kingston officer, he, the East Kingston officer is being paid more than our officer. So I think it was about four years ago I came to you guys. We went from, um, I believe it was $42 to $50. This time I'm looking to go from $50 to $60. Um, and then I'm also looking to go to $14 an hour for a Cruiser fee and $16 for an admin fee. The reason why we're going up on the admin fee is that percentage, part of the percentage of that money that goes into the Special Detail Account helps pay for FICR and different parts of the part-time officers' pay. Uh, speaking back with our previous bookkeeper, I worked with her on some of the numbers and that was one of the ones that we needed to go up on because we were kind of close to what it was costing us that, uh, to pay the officers for retirement and different things. Um, so I guess in, in the end, I'm looking to go up $10 on the officer and stay the same on the Cruiser fee and go $2 up on the admin fee.
So I think it's worth noting, um, because people at home can't see it, but the aver- you have the average here of all these towns. So do you want to just explain the average? Because what, what you're proposing to me sounds very competitive as well.
Yeah, the average for out of the, like, 15 agencies that I looked at was 57.70 for an hourly rate for the officer, 13.73 for a Cruiser fee, and 19.27 was the admin fee. We're obviously under on our admin fee. We're about right on target for the Cruiser fee and, you know, there's agencies that are on there that are up to $70 an hour just for the officer fee. Um, I'm not quite ready to go to that.
I think, you know, the other thing I would add is, um, as I, I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but our, our current financial emergency that we have in town is how I like to refer to it. You need, you need to control things that you can control. And this is one of those things we can control because I, I hope residents understand and the chief can correct me if I get any of this wrong, but, you know, we're, we're essentially invoicing these companies.
Correct.
And we, we do have to front the paycheck.
We do, but that money comes back into our Special Detail Account and I'll say it again if I haven't said it before, that Special Detail Account is where our fuel comes from.
Yep.
Um, we pay for every Cruiser that's driven in town, have for 10-plus years out of that. I don't budget for fuel. Uh, we're spending about $3,000 a month in fuel right now and that's not coming out of the taxpayers' money. That's coming off the back of the officer directing traffic. Um, so we've been, you know, lucky enough that, you know, we have to have roadwork done, you know? As the Board is aware publicly, you know, we've all, we're short an officer. Um, so if I can go up $10 an hour, that gives the guys a little bit more, or officers a little bit more money. It's another way of trying to retain them, uh, because they could go to another agency and make more money doing details, not the details of their full-time job, but these guys are trying to put in as much time as they can with details so they can make some money.
Yep.
Uh, to subsidize what the towns are paying.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
Well, it goes hand in hand. I mean, we've been sitting here talking about how all the, um, first responders have been getting raises across the board in all the different towns and stuff, so we can't, um, along with, we've given raises also, we can't give raises to that and then not also go up on the other things that are collate along with that, which is this and that hourly rate. So, I mean, not because it makes common sense, but it needs to be done point blank.
You know, and, and the hardest thing is, is like I said earlier, is, you know, we're going into other towns, we're doing details when we don't have them, other towns are coming into us and they're doing them when we don't have offices available. So it's hard for two offices to be on. I'll give you an example. Nottingham is $70 an hour to the officer. We're 50, so if we're working on the same street, one's getting 70, one's getting 50.
Right.
You gotta kind of stay competitive to what the other ones are. The 70, to me, I'm not going up to that, not until most of Rockingham County works up to that way. You know, and this, this pay scale that I did for the, or the, you know, the detailed list, that was compiled as of two weeks ago. Um, and I know that there's some agencies that are on here that in the next year will be going up a little bit. They have, you know, they've gone up two and a half, 4%, whatever it is. Some of them go up by the percentage. Some of them go up as an annual contract because they're union. Um, so because I know there's some changes, but that number keeps us current, in my opinion, to what the other agencies are doing.
So if I may, I'd like to, um, propose to approve as, um, as proposed by the Police Chief on an increase to the Special Detail Rate to $60 per hour for the officer, $14 per hour for the Cruiser, $16 for the admin.
Seconded.
Seconded by Joe. Open for discussion. Any discussion? Public? No? From the Board?
No.
There being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
Um, you, the purchase of that Cruiser, please.
Yep, um, and I'm torn bringing this up today, but I'll bring it up just because I'm already here, not to waste everybody's time. So I sent, earlier in the week or last week, I sent you some documents on buying a used car. Uh, the reason why we're trying to buy a used car is everyone's aware we're in the default budget. I didn't, because of the default budget, we weren't able to get a new Cruiser this year. Um, I've stood up here like a broken record 100 times telling you that our fleet is getting older. Um, I know there's members in other departments that think that we have too many cars, don't understand why we need the cars, um, but, you know, those members of the other departments don't want to come and talk to me about it. Um, but they just want to keep talking amongst themselves. So I bring up the fact that I have an opportunity to buy a car. This town of Southampton, um, has a policy, they can only have a certain amount of cars. They just got a new one, so they're looking to get rid of their SUV. Um, and they are willing to leave it fully outfitted, meaning that it has lights on it, it's got the cage in the back with a prisoner transport area, all that stuff that if we were to buy a used car, I'd have to buy all that stuff to fit it. Um, we have, the only stuff that we have left over fits a Crown Vic. I don't have anything to fit any of these new ones, um, because everything we have is used. Um, so Southampton has offered to sell us their Crown Vic for $6,000, leaving it fully outfitted. Yep, I'll have to do some lettering, clean it up and do a few things to it, which is understandable. It's a used car. Um, I think I gave you guys the information on it. It's a 2016. I did a Kelly Blue Book, um, pricing report on it. The Blue Book value seems fantastic. That's for a regular, and I think I left a note inside the paperwork I sent you guys saying that's not 100% positive if that's a police vehicle. It's a, that style SUV.
Right.
Uh, so I don't, you know, it's saying it's worth much more than we'd be getting. But I'm not 1,000% sure. I did as many options as I could, um, but for the $6,000 to buy a used car fully outfitted, um, having a default budget, and my suggestion is to buy it from my Special Detail Account. Again, that money coming from my details, um, it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. I can get a few years out of the car. Um, you know, we need, need new cars. I've sent you guys a, a letter on the, it's entitled the Gray Impala that was sent to me by my fleet manager who takes, helps take care of the car, the cars. Um, that was my previous vehicle that I had, that Chief Streeter had. Uh, it's approximately 10 years old. Um, and we're using it as a frontline car. Um, frontline cars are not 10 years old. Um, they're typically five. Uh, but that one, because it was a chief's vehicle, didn't have the miles on it. Uh, so we put it in service. Uh, as a frontline car, it lasted about a year, um, year and a half before it started having some issues. Um, it was written up on April 2nd, um, by the fleet manager saying that he felt the car was unsafe to be driven as a patrol car. Um, I'm not going to go through all the stuff in it, um, but basically he feels as though the suspension is not doing well. Um, you gotta figure the cars are weighted down with the equipment on a daily basis. Um, they're driven, driven harder than a regular car. Um, so that car is going to get transferred. What I'd like to do with that one is put that one to details. That one will be making us the admin fee, Cruiser fee, and that's what it will kind of finish off until it, it dies. Um, the Cruiser from Southampton would replace that one, um, so I could use that as a frontline car, or we could use it for details. It could be a mix of both. It has less miles than the cars we're getting rid of. Um, and as I explained in the memo I sent you guys, that car, um, car, the Gray Impala was not the car I was intending on taking offline. Um, I had D-13 was the car that I really wanted to take offline because that car's overheating on a regular basis. The battery has to be jump-started. It's got a drawer in there somewhere that is killing the batteries. Um, and that car is about 10 years old, but we're still using that as a frontline car. Um, there's Chevy Impalas. I'm not going to knock them. They were great cars. They were never designed for a patrol car. Uh, they were designed more for an admin vehicle or like a detective's car. There's a lot of PDs throughout the state that still use them. Um, they are starting to become a nuisance and cost us more money than they're worth. Um, you know, we've got another one that only has 70,000 miles on it and I have to take a serious look at that car and see if it's worth driving. Uh, that car, when it was first purchased, I think within the first two weeks, it almost was totaled. Uh, someone had lost a spare tire. We were bringing a subject to the jail, dropped him off, came back and the spare tire was in the road. The officers didn't see it and it took out the whole front end. The headlights are now shutting off by themselves, turning on, shutting off. The doors are locking by themselves. It has an electrical failure somewhere. Um, can we find it? I don't know. Uh, we've looked at it, had a couple of mechanics look at it. If it's not doing it, it's hard to find. Uh, so that's another car. You know, the three Chevys right now are, you know, a little problematic with some of the maintenance stuff on them. Buying a used car, is it the best thing? Yeah, probably not, um, but it's the best thing that we can do right now for the money. Uh, it's not costing the taxpayers any money. I'm taking it out of our Special Detail Account. It's going to make us money, uh, and it gives us a safer vehicle than what we have. Hopefully I didn't go off tangent too much.
But then you would take, I think you said call the D-13. I remember the note, but is it D-13? Is that the one you're going to take offline?
That's the one I'd like to take offline. That was the original one that I needed to take offline.
Yep.
Um, so D-13 to me was worse than the Gray Impala. I'll sit back and figure out which is the worst out of the two. One of them will go to details. I have a feeling of not D-13. I think D-13's going to be parked in the parking lot.
So, so my, okay, so that's my next question is what happens to this, to this vehicle that you're gonna?
Maybe next year if the budget passes, then we'll trade that one in. Uh, it's not worth sending these to auction.
That's what I was going to ask. Is it?
It has to go to auction or it can be traded in. If we send it to auction, uh, I have to pay to have it stripped. I have to pay to have all the lettering taken off of it. The last one, we lost money on. Um, so the company that we buy.
So it will be parked until we can figure out what to do. Okay.
So I mean, this is what it comes down to for me is, uh, every department head in this town had a proposed plan before March 14th, and the voters turned around and told the department heads, "No, we don't like your plan. We want you to go with the same plan you had the year before that we approved." And when the voters tell you to do that, you have to start thinking outside of the box and figure out ways, stopgap really, to see if we can get to next second Tuesday in March of 2024. And to me, this is the type of thing you have to do, you know?
Not ideal. I don't want to buy a used car if we don't have to, but, you know, it's better than what we have.
But you're being fiscally responsible in finding solutions, so.
And I mean, it's worth asking, do we know how much we have in that account right now, what the total is? Diane always gets, Diane always gets happy when she knows what questions I'm going to ask.
So she's got the answers?
Right. Just so the public knows, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't feel comfortable saying a number. I think I have a number, but I don't know if I'm accurate.
So I mean, point blank, you have two vehicles that are unsafe for your offices, unsafe for the public, that are a waste of money to where you could dump all that money to what you would be purchasing this car for, that you could possibly be able to use for maybe three years, two, pushing it?
If I took this $6,000 and put it into the two cars, there wouldn't be enough money to fix them.
That's what I mean. So, and it, and by purchasing this, it'd be a lot cheaper than trying to lease in, if we could, another vehicle.
I would love to lease another one, but the taxpayers said no.
That's what I'm saying, though, because it'd be too expensive.
Yeah.
At this point.
Not that it'd be too expensive, it's just in the budget.
So the other side of this for me is, I'm all for it. You take the six grand out, but you're not depleting your funds, right?
We're up in the 90s.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
I think we're up in the 90s.
Right, so you're, you're taking a little bit.
My plan was to lease one out of that account, but this seemed cheaper for right now.
Yep.
Because I don't know how many details we're going to get and I don't want to deplete the account by taking $18,000 out of it every year for lease. Uh, I'm not quite ready to do that.
Okay.
What do you think it is?
90-ish.
It's not on the document we have. Do the trustees manage that?
No.
Okay.
I think there's another one. If we, we open that.
Oh, that's a trustee one, that's why. Okay.
One moment.
So that's why you're looking at the trustee one?
Sorry for the intermission.
No, no worries.
I can keep talking, that's what I do.
I screwed us all up. We were, we were moving right along.
Yes, when I thought it was going to be a quick one.
Exactly.
Thanks, Matt.
Bruins aren't on tonight, Mike.
No, I know.
Chief, your radio will be able to transfer into other vehicle without a problem, right?
I believe they're going to leave me the radio that's in it.
Really? So you just have to reprogram it to the channel? Oh, really? It's already good.
Should be. If they leave it in, the radio should work fine.
Awesome.
Uh, if they don't, we'll take something out of one of the other cars and just pop it in. Be the same thing.
So it's like roughly, um, 112,000 change.
Perfect. So if, if I may, I would like to move to approve the purchase of a 2016 Ford fully outfitted police Cruiser from Southampton PD in the amount of $6,000.
Second.
The funds, hold on. The funds will be drawn from the Police Special Detail Fund.
Second.
Joe, uh, second it. Any other discussion from the public? There being none from the Board?
Just like to thank the chief for his diligence and, uh, being able to do this.
All got to try to do our part to make it work, so.
That's it. And by the way, what other departments think what you have or what you don't have is none of their business. It's your business to run your department. It's your job to come to us so that we can help you to make sure that this town is run safely in a safe manner. End of discussion. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, um, fire communications recepta.
It says fire communications reception. Is it, are we having a party?
Reception. Oh, okay.
Like cake and stuff?
We'll be working on the, on the wording.
It's not recepting.
Because I'll go to, I'll go to the reception.
Just one thing on my brother in blue. I agree 100% with the Police Chief. The town has some Cruisers that should have been taken out of service and I mentioned that when I became chief. Those vehicles represent the town. They're public safety vehicles and when they're breaking down, it's not right. So just to clear, I'm not one of them that think, I, I personally think every officer should have their own Cruiser. That way they're responsible for it and they take care of it.
Exactly.
That's me. Uh, the reason I'm up here is in regards to, uh, communication. I would like the Board, uh, we're having some communication issue with, throughout the town. I would respectfully ask that the Board give permission to the Town Administrator to look and seek, uh, alternatives for communication for public safety.
It's not exclusively a fire issue. It's highway, it's PD, it's EMD.
That's why I said public safety.
I mean, I notice that when I ride in my car, I lose my FM in certain parts of the town. Well, if I'm, if you're losing an FM.
Right.
Right? When it's that strong in one quick spot, you, 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 those are dead spots.
I didn't know it was this bad, Bob.
Well, if, I'm saying, if it doesn't pick up FM, it's not going to pick up his radios either.
Serious radio.
Or any of the safeties, exactly.
It's definitely something that has to be addressed.
Yeah. But I would, that, that's all. I would just wanted to respectfully ask the Board if they could authorize the TA to run with it.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, we authorize the Town Administrator to, uh, look into, uh, regionality where that could be appropriate and, um, come back to us and we'll talk about it.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
I knew that hand was going to come.
Unusual to see her on that side.
State your name, please.
Diane Moran, uh, Juniper Lane. So my question would be, these dead spots that we have supposedly, it's not cellular, I take it, and I would assume that it's more to do with, uh, like a two-way communication radio. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
So is, are these dead spots, seems like there's a different type of problem, that maybe we need to get the antennas fixed to get the reception better. So to, so, so...
So I think some work has been done on that, but...
So we, we're definite that it's, but if it's always the same dead spot, there's got to be some way to fix those dead spots. Because I can't see, if you go to Plastow and have them use their dispatcher, wouldn't the dead spot still be there?
Well, that was a question I was going to have.
We wouldn't make the change until we had all that information.
Right.
But it's important to get the information so that we make an intelligent decision. The current host of our dispatch, I believe the word indifferent to our needs would be the best way to describe it. And, um, that's not the way public safety should be operating.
No.
But, but I think what Diane's saying is, is true, is you, you need the macro solution, not the micro, and that's, I think, what the intention is. I think we, uh...
Do we have a motion?
You made a motion. Do we have a second?
Mike was the second.
Mike seconded it. Any further discussion? Public? No? Board? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, appointments. The resignation of our health officer was appointed in 2021. We have Mr. Richard Robert LeVone, who, um, I believe for health reasons is stepping down. And he has given us a letter of resignation from that department.
He did not. He gave a verbal resignation.
Right.
Yeah, and I, and I think there, uh, has been at least some verbal communication for a while now that he was...
Going to be stepping down right now.
Yeah, and, and I'd just like to say, you know, since I've been on the Board, uh, he was here before I was on the Board, and he's always been excellent. And I mean, um, you know, we, we often say at the end of these things, you know, with our, with our thanks and stuff, and, and I'll just say, he, he was always, uh, one of those people who you call, he answered, he got you a solution. He, he was always very responsive and, you know, he's a, he's already retired from another career, Essex County Sheriff, so he was always in public service. So, you know, I, I appreciate, I'm sure the Board appreciates what he did for the town, and it'll be tough shoes to fill, but we'll certainly start that process too. So I, if it's okay, I'll move to accept the verbal resignation of our current health officer, Robert LeVeron.
Seconded by Mr. Conley. All those in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. And we're going to, um, field resumes to fill this position.
Uh, the deputy health officer, Mr. Franz, also had sent a letter of intent. Um, before we would ask the Board to make any final decision regarding that, would like to see a resume and qualifications. Just as a reminder, you make the recommendation to the state of New Hampshire. They in fact make the appointment consistently, obviously, 128.
Right.
128.
If there's anybody else also that would like to submit?
Yep, we can do a one ad right now. Anybody who's interested in the job, call the Town Hall.
But yeah, maybe we can officially put something on the website tomorrow. And, um, we've already, we've already, we already have one to take a look at, right? So. Is Diane still here?
So this gentleman is your deputy health officer right now, Michael.
Yep.
So it would behoove you, I think, to not prolong this because people need to have septic tanks installed. So where he's already doing the job, you should, I might recommend, I would recommend, suggest that you recommend him to the state.
So, so I would tend to agree with you if not for the fact that he's already been appointed. So any service that we would need, he's already able to give us. So my thing would be, let's, let's, uh, at least two weeks, I think. We have another meeting in two weeks. Let's target two weeks to make it official, but because in his role as the deputy, he's acting anyway, so we should, the town should not...
Shouldn't waste time, but we have to do our proper paperwork.
Right. No, what I was gonna say is, I don't foresee anything lacking in two weeks, because he's already appointed and in the position.
He has been doing the job.
Yeah, exactly. But good point, let's not, let's target a date.
So what are you gonna do in the meantime?
For what?
For health officer.
He, that would be.
You're gonna make him the acting health officer?
No.
Or you're gonna keep him as deputy?
Keep him as deputy.
Keep him as deputy.
In his role as deputy, he can do everything we need. Yeah.
But it would only be fair and just to put it out there.
Well, you don't have to.
We don't have to, but it would be fair and just for.
Fair to whom?
Anybody else who's interested in the position.
Yeah.
It's another step towards transparency.
Exactly.
So we're gonna put that on the agenda for the next meeting, please.
Got it.
And that we will take care of it then. See if anybody else has submitted anything, a resume or whatnot, and we should have his from him. All right, very good. Letter to the bank authorizing treasurer to create an account of New Hampshire. So we received a, as a backup that's put in place for checks and balances, that in case any accounts are open, closed, money to be shifted from one account to another. It was put in place that the banks are supposed to notify the town administrator and the selectmen so that we're fully aware and that we need to sign off in these cases, so that people aren't doing things that they shouldn't be doing. So with that said, we received a letter from North Shore Bank requesting us to sign off on the fact that what we talked about a few weeks ago, about the grant that was issued to the planning board, and as of the last moment that we have, because the state has shifted their way of wanting to pay the different towns that have accepted the grants several different ways. And the last one is that what's gonna happen is that they are gonna get billed with an invoice, they in turn will send the check to the town, the town will take in the money, and then the town has to turn around and cut the check out to.
The planning commission?
The legal counsel for the planning board that's taking care of the grant and doing the actual work for it. So was there a nomination?
Shall we read the letter?
Yeah, why don't you read it, and then I'll do a motion.
I just had it. Hold on, let me go back. All right, this is a letter addressed to the North Shore Bank. Dear Tom, the board of selectmen is authorizing the town of Newton treasurer Lisa Gonyer to open a new account entitled Invest New Hampshire Grant Disbursement Revolving Fund on behalf of the town of Newton. Please assist Ms. Gonyer with selecting the best account for the town respectfully, would be us as the board of selectmen. So if somebody wants to make a motion.
So I'll make, I'll move to approve letter authorizing treasurer to create an account at North Shore Bank for New Hampshire Invest, titled Invest New Hampshire Grant Distributed Disbursement Revolving Fund.
Second?
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? There being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we are onto opera and the update, please.
And not that I don't wanna be next, but you skipped trustee of the trust fund.
Did we?
This is a revised agenda.
Oh, okay. All right, then I'll let you continue, or I'll continue. Okay, so just keeping you informed again on the projects. Update on our security cameras, they are up and running, although we still feel there's a little fine tuning to the system. We'll keep you posted on that. We're still working on the generator at the transfer station, and now we're researching the size of the propane tank, because depending on the size, it will determine location and setback, so we'll let you know on that. Communication dispatch, you've already heard a lot about it. The opera committee realized life safety issue regarding police, fire, and highway communication with Rockingham Dispatch and adjacent communities. We've got antennas, we've got new desk sets, we've got new repeaters, and we're realizing we have to take another step. So our committee did make the recommendation to ask our TA to do a little, help us with a little research, so that's why the fire chief brought it up earlier. The road agent assisted emergency management with the message board sign. He tested and installed new batteries, and now I'm allowed to use that sign again, because remember, I get paid every minute that it's operating. So it will be put back out, reminding people that Earth Day, by the way, is Saturday. You can pick up the Earth, this is EOC Conservation, you can pick up the bags downstairs and at the transfer station. The first 100, 150 people are gonna get a little gift at the transfer station on Saturday, the 22nd, so don't forget about that.
But get a free mattress?
Oh, we need to go up on those rates, by the way. The EOC reminder, the pandemic is still here. I know everyone is kind of laying back and being really easygoing. It's still here. You can still get sick. Watch your kids, watch the seniors. The EOC has plenty of test kits. They're free. For those of you in TV land, if you have one, or you get what seems to be an outdated one, the state in their infinite wisdom said, that's not the real date that's posted on it. Add six months to that date, and that's how long it's good for. So just don't be afraid to use it. Add six months. Typical government thing. Homeland Security is compiling a damage assessment. I've worked closely with the highway department, police, and fire. They're trying to see if we meet the threshold to be a reimbursable disaster. Newton spent in, they would only let us use 48 hours. We had to, all three departments had to get together and figure out what was the most money spent in a 48-hour period, and we could only pick that. I don't know who thinks of these things. And we spent $23,291.26 during the 48-hour period that Mike and the fire and the police chief and I got together and figured this is the best chance we have at beating that threshold. So I want to thank the police and fire and highway, because they only gave us 36 hours to compile all this information. So it was a huge task, but we did it. I'm still working on three different grants, two with the highway department, one with the police department, along with my emergency management grant. You know, I don't have to tell you, we're all on a default budget. We're trying to make ends meet, and anytime we can get a grant to offset our operations, it's a plus for everybody. And Earth Day, I kind of already said it, it's Saturday, so I don't need to read that, the 22nd. We are not doing roadside pickup. I'm getting phone calls. We have one highway guy, so please bring your rubbish, cute little blue trash bags down to the transfer station, and I'll give you a little ditty bag as a prize.
Thank you, Trash. All right. Discussion of the risk management report from Primex about the skate park. So Primex is the town insurer, and they did a walkthrough of our skate park, and the letter reads as follows. Thank you for inviting me to Greenie Park to review the Greenie Skateboard Park from a safety management perspective. Having a skateboard park can be very beneficial for a town. It can provide a safe place for youth to convene, a place for positive outreach for community leaders, and sometimes serves as a means for outside groups to have impactful partnerships that would not have otherwise existed. Although skateboarding is considered a high-risk activity with potential for serious injury, municipalities can better control these risks with regular maintenance of their skateboard parks, have frequent visits from community members, leaders, and have clear and enforceable rules. Because of the risks associated with skateboard parks, these parks can only be beneficial if they are maintained and functioning accordingly. As I mentioned during my visit, in its current condition, the Greenie Skateboard Park is not functioning accordingly and needs much attention. Many of it, not all, of the ramps are in disrepair and will likely have to be replaced. The surfacing blacktop appears to need resurfacing, and the surrounding chain link fence must be repaired or replaced as it contains exposed shod edges. As reminder, it is necessary to conduct regular maintenance tasks, AKA frequent checks that consist of walkthroughs, visual checks, and as needed, cleaning tasks. My observations are captured on the subsequent pages identified as recommendations. Please establish a plan to correct the deficiencies, and please keep me appraised of any progress that is made by completing the shaded response boxes and returning a copy to my attention. Please call with any questions or concerns, and thank you for inviting me into the town of Newton respectfully, Nicole Amagany. What he said. That's a tough one. And we would like to thank her for coming down. So needless to say, Nicole took a lot of pictures of the park, the huge cracks in the asphalt, the cement, the ramps. The ramps were done in a makeshift way. They've been deteriorating. The shards on the fence she's talking about, it's a simple, basic chain link fence, the way that they all, most of them are at the top. But the issue with that is that the ramps and the bumps that the kids skateboard on are right next to that, so if they were to go airborne and end up landing on top of that chain link fence, they could tear a bunch of flesh by becoming engulfed on top of the fence. So with that being said, she's basically telling us that it's a huge insurance liability, and told us that the park should be shut down until these things are taken care of and addressed.
To the skateboard park, just to be clear.
Yeah.
That portion of Greenie.
Yeah, the part of the park, but.
You know, the key thing is, you know, just to kind of cut to the chase is, we've been trying to, you know, two things have been happening in this town for a long time, I'll just be frank about it, is, is one, we don't invest in our parks and recreation. And two, if we do invest, we certainly don't invest any money to maintain it. It's just, we don't. Now, I should be clear that we pay for landscaping, right? So the baseball fields are landscaped, but, you know, we've had some residents who have been trying to raise money to redo this skateboard park. If they had enough to do it, then the next thing they'd have to do is they'd have to ask the voters for money to maintain it, because it's in black and white now. The insurance carrier said, you have to, you just can't build these things in hope they're gonna last forever. You have to invest in it. So, you know, if we went down there right now with yellow caution tape and put it around, around there, that's gonna last like 10 seconds. It's what's called an attractive nuisance, and if anybody's got little kids, they gravitate over there. It's just, that's what's going on there. So we, to be fair, the town has given a lot of money, I wouldn't say a lot of money, the town has given a good share of money the last three warrants, I think, and the residents have raised a lot of money. Inevitably, the question is gonna come, how much money we have in that thing now, but, which I think is $25,000.
Roughly about $28,000.
$28,000. So we have that, but that's not near enough for the project. The town this year, it was one of the warrant articles that failed. I took it as the town saying, hey, we just gave you $10,000 last year, we're not gonna give it to you this year. I didn't take it personally, as the town saying, we never wanna do this. It's just, this year was tough. So we have $28,000, which is not enough to do anything there. It's beyond repair, basically. You can't, you can't sit there. I've been on recreation for almost 10 years. We've looked at it, so there's, we can't, it's an all or nothing.
It's an open bid for it.
Yeah. So I do know that one of the residents who's shepherding this thing, he's trying to figure out what he can do for $28,000, but what the board kind of has to decide is, do we wanna leave this nuisance there? Or do we wanna take steps to, you know, demo this thing and have a clean piece of area there that we could do something in a year, two years, three years? I don't know. That's the question.
My opinion, and it is my opinion only, is that right now, if we move to demolish the structures, people will be upset with us. However, if some child or adult falls, breaks a bone or something like that, or gets more seriously injured, and we don't do anything, we'll be more liable. So I think we need to move to probably demolish the structures at this point in time, and then get a plan together with a committee of concerned citizens to see what we can do in the future to resurrect it or move it somewhere else.
It's a liability. If it gets hurt, it's, right? And I don't mean just kids skateboarding, falling down, we take that risk, but with the sharpness and the pictures, and you can, I mean, I was there over the weekend, it's in disarray. It's bad. So I would say, based on liability alone, so that our police, sorry, well, police and fire and EMTs don't have to go down there and take care of something, I think it's time to take the nuisance off the table.
If there's anybody in the audience that knows anything about demoing structures like that, anybody?
Gentleman?
You mean the official, or official knows what they're doing and one that wants to have fun with it?
My question.
That wasn't even subtle. At all.
I'm getting worse at this, Mike. I'm not getting any better. But my thing would be, does, it sounds like a silly question, but is there any way we can demo in such a way that we won't be putting good money after bad to do something later? Because I would, if this is a wholesale project, right? We can't do Band-Aids, like Joe said. We're gonna have to demo it anyway, right? So it doesn't matter if we demo it tomorrow or demo it in three years. The demo, I guess what I'm saying, is the demo worth the town's money to do that? Are we gonna put ourselves in more of a financial burden if we do a demo now?
Well, honestly, I've looked at the skateboard park probably dozens of times, and I can't stand at the podium and tell you unless I go back down and accurately look at it to see if we can pull the concrete structures off it and leave the asphalt in place. That would be the best scenario. I just don't know if some of them have been paved around, because we don't wanna move it and end up with a hole and then a different liability. I mean, I'll look at it, we'll get back to it. I mean, you're right, the town's been put on notice now. We can't ignore it. I don't think, I'll get to it this week, I'll try to get to it next week, and is it something you wanna talk about in another selectmen's meeting, or can we decide now if it can be demoed with leaving an asphalt pad, we just move forward with it?
I think that would be, to my point of view, I think that would be the best way of looking at it at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know how much acreage is there, but relocating it might be advantageous as well. Moving it away from the ball fields, from the stands, and from the playground, that's basically phytalus. I know there's a big parking lot, and I don't know how much land is there.
Well, there's an ongoing thing. We won't get into a long discussion about it now. Trish knows, we've talked about it. There's a pot over there we've been talking about clearing for quite a bit, because it's surprising. You would go there and think we've got plenty of parking. When baseball holds their events, there's not plenty of parking. It fills right up, and it spills out onto the street, and the PD has to deal with it on certain events, especially opening day. on certain events, especially opening day. Matt, you touched upon it, I'm just going to give my 10 cents standing here. The residents in town have to be aware that that's the only park we have. That's it. The schools have the other parks, we really can't schedule events, so money has to be put into it. We did the playground four years ago now. I mentioned to you guys this spring that we've got to put an additional wood chips in there. There's a depth that you have to maintain to make it safe. We have no funds to do that. This is ridiculous. I, I, I mean, we have to come up with some type of funding, and if we put it in as a warrant and they throw it out, we don't get the money. If you put it into the budget and the budget's too high, they throw it out to the default. I don't know how we sell this, but we got to sell it to the residents that maintenance and upgrades to facilities and parks and everything else needs to be done.
They're doing business.
It just needs to be done.
And sadly, sadly, this is how you have to sell things to people sometimes, is you have to take them away.
Well, and because of a safety issue and, you know, not exposing ourselves to bigger problems. So I'll let you guys know. I'll get back to you as soon as I can get down there and look at it, and we'll, we'll move the structures once you give me the okay to do it. And just so the taxpayers in town know, I'm doing it for free. I got no money in my highway budget to do it. No money in that budget.
I, I'd be willing to authorize at this point, I don't know about the rest of you, if Mike was to go down there to save some time, if he felt that just the removal of the ramps would be suffice with the underlayment. If not, then if he needs to come back to the board, because we have to, he has to propose something else to us that needs to be done.
Yeah.
So question, Mike, let's say worst-case scenario, you have to rip it all up. Then there's work underneath that has to be done, right? And then grass it, whatever.
Well, I don't know if you have to grass it. Depending on what the materials, I'm going to assume there's gravel underneath it. It could be leveled out and left as gravel.
Okay.
No different than the parking lot.
Right.
You know, as long as it was a smooth-
I didn't think the gravel, but yeah, you're right, that would probably be under there. Okay.
But I can tell you standing there, if I can leave the asphalt in place, I'll just take the structures and go.
Right.
And again, to be clear, we're not cherry picking structures, they're all going.
Right.
The ones that are good or bad, it doesn't matter, they're all going, it's flat.
They're all in disrepair.
Right, okay.
There's nothing good there. And the first observation the consultant made was the alligator cracks on the asphalt itself. The holes were so, the gaps are so wide that they'd grab a wheel, whether you were going to skate or skateboard, and you're going down before you get to a ramp.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's that bad. Yeah, I haven't looked at it over here. But is that going to be okay for a walking surface? Should be.
Should be, I think.
Yeah, for walking, right.
Yeah. Or stone dust, or some, someone above. I don't have money for crack seal, I'd put, I'd put it on one of the roads.
So are those that are in favor of allowing Mike to remove the structures if he deems it will take care of the situation for now?
I'm in favor.
Second?
I'll second that.
Mike Conley, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only thing I'd add is, is let's connect, and I can help with this, with Paul Murray, who's, you know, just, just to run it by him, he's, he's not only running the charitable thing to raise money for this, but he's also an architect for these things. He designs them, so he, he might just be a good person to socialize this with, so he, you know, I mean, we don't have many options, right? It's not like, we just discussed, we can't keep a lot of stuff, but, you know, just so he knows this is our, our next plan, you know?
You guys will do that.
Yeah.
I mean, you can reach out to me.
Yeah, exactly.
There's not much to watch a demo thing, but, yeah.
Yeah, but.
Okay.
Thank you for your help, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
It's great that we had a guy here who-
That was smooth, Matt, that was smooth.
I know.
And you got it at the right price.
Exactly, yeah, these days.
Proposed restructuring, building fee updates. Would you like to address this, Jim, please?
And I know we gave direction on some code enforcement issues going on in town. That's been taking up some of this time. He asked to be on the agenda for the next meeting, for the next renovation and fee schedule.
Okay. Yep. So we're going to carry that on to the next meeting. Food pantry donations.
I would move per RSA 3195B to accept and expend unanticipated funds for the food pantry in the amount of $250.0 from the Tricat Foundation with our thanks.
Second?
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous. Finalizing documents for sale for Tax Map 12-1-1, and I believe that that is the property to Mr. Ryan.
Ryan Norman.
Yeah, Ryan Norman, that we proposed.
This is the landlord, this is the landlord property on Thornell.
So what's in front of us is just a quitclaim deed for the board to sign off so that the property can be finalized.
Yeah, and Trish is going to ask the next question that I was going to ask, but go ahead, Trish.
So Conservation hasn't seen, whoop, Conservation hasn't seen that, in that deed, is there information about the easement that he promised he would give us?
Subject to a restrictive covenant that the grantee and the grantees, heirs, executors, administrators, and assignees shall not remove more than 60% of the vegetation on the premises here in.
That was one, but there should be an easement. No easement?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's three.
Okay.
There's four subject to easements.
Okay.
I won't sit there and read it, but-
Okay.
One of the, one of the things we did was, you know, we laid all that out, gave it to Town Council, with Town Council having the direction is, let's make sure the deed is, sometimes I think when people hear quitclaim deed, they think it's two sentences and it's-
Right.
But this is-
Okay.
Town Council has, has prepared and then signed off, his council has done the same.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gone back and forth to make sure everything appropriate is in place.
Okay.
So we, yeah.
Well, do we want to make the motion?
We need a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to move to sign the quitclaim deed for Tax Map 12-1-1, located off of Thornell Road.
So moved.
Joe, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
And just in terms of transparency, let's, can we make sure this is part of the minutes, the deed, so everybody can read it, so.
Before you get to manifest other business?
Yeah.
Okay. So just two things, I know you talked a little bit about Building Department, so I gave Mr. Chairman a copy of a couple of letters that Conservation did. We had a couple of sidewalks, wetland violations, but there was potentially other violations, possibly businesses being run at those locations. My letter indicates to these people that we did observe that, multiple commercial vehicles indicating potential commercial property being operated in a residential area, so that a copy of these letters were going to Code Enforcement via Selectmen. One of the letters was also going to State, oh, I forgot to give it to you, State Department of Transportation, because there's a potential driveway issue there, and also Planning Board. So you have a copy. I went to put these letters, a copy, in the Building Department mailbox, because the door says go in the hallway. I went in the hallway and I can't find a Building Department mailbox, so they don't have it yet. I'll have to send it to Sam. I couldn't find it. So that was one thing. The other thing is, the ARP, I know I already gave my report, hi, welcome. So I gave you hard copies of the changes since the spreadsheet that I sent you on March 20th. And just, and quickly, this is real quick, the top piece is everything that we have spent on that first sheet, down to $331,704.3. I'm within six cents of the general ledger on this. And then the bottom portion of that first page is items ARP has talked about, we haven't committed, we've contemplated. So the bottom section under that blue writing, proposed items in the works but no commitment, if, that's a wishy-washy little slush fund, if you will, so we haven't spent that yet. These are things that we thought we needed to spend it on, but we're trying to do life safety first. We're being very careful about life safety. So it's not something that we can completely spend, because we've promised these things, and some of these things, if it becomes life safety, the money's going to go that way, and we'll make that recommendation to you. So I just wanted to let you know that.
And once again, the time deadlines for, that this money has to be?
So we have until December 31st, 2024, to earmark what we're spending it on. And it has to be spent by December 31st, 2026. Also comes into play with all the administration for it. As an example, right now, April 30th, I have been out straight, matter of fact, some people, sometimes they come to visit me at the fire station and I shut the door. I'm trying to diligently-
You're smart. You're very smart.
You know what I mean, right?
Especially if it's a Selectmen, you're very smart.
So I have till December 30th, I have to write a narrative for every single thing that you have approved me to spend money on for the last 12 months. So it's pretty intricate. That, so part of this money also has to pay me for the next two years as well to do these reports. So it's not something we can necessarily spend, it's something, again, we've been working on, but we're also thinking that this money may be earmarked for more life safety issues than anything else. So I just wanted to explain that to you. I'm always hearing, oh, ARP can do it, ARP can do it, ARP really can't do it, we really can't. And that bottom line, after proposed items, you still figure administration costs and unexpected things that come up are going to have to come out of this, this sheet. And the only other thing I included, the, the printout, was just the updated invoices that have been paid, and you'll see in the column, in the multi-lined paper, out on the far right-hand side, under notes, that's where we had to give a deposit, not pay the whole thing. And then the last column is pending, so we haven't paid, we still owe it. And we could still owe it, because we haven't received all the merchandise, like the desk sets and some of the antennas at the PD, we don't have it all yet. We did a deposit, same with the boat, we don't have it all. One of the things that, the repeater that I'm working on with Mike, we're waiting for that to be fine-tuned before we pay. So those things are included in my total, so I've accounted for it on my spreadsheet, but that's why you see maybe some blank lines, okay? Sorry about that.
We'll forgive you this time.
Thank you, Trish.
Thanks, Trish. Chief?
Just looking for clarification on the purchase of a car. Is that check going to be written by the bookkeeper, or is that something I need to come back and ask permission to have that done? I didn't remember it in the motion.
You're talking about please special detail? So it will come out of the please special detail part, so what will happen is, the bookkeeper will have a manifest, and the treasurer will write a check out of that account.
So we sign off the manifest, then the check will get cut?
The bookkeeper does manifest, the board authorizes and signs the manifest, the treasurer cuts the check out of the special detail account.
So what will be on the next one?
Got a couple things on the other business.
Yep.
Just so everybody out there knows you're here.
I've got a couple things for other business. If allowed.
No, that's too bad, we're not going there. Anybody else? Go ahead, Joe.
Just a couple things. I think we need to look at our, we may have discussed it last time, but we need to look at our fee structure at the transfer station. And one thing in particular, from what I understand, and I've been told, that the mattresses are costing us $80 apiece to, to get removed, and we are charging people $50. Plus this weekend, there was a pile out there of anywhere between five to 10 mattresses that were outside of the storage bin, because it was full. And I don't know what the disposition of those mattresses are, or is, or were, but in any event, and if, everything in that bin that's full is costing us additional $30 a pop to get rid of. So I think we need to adjust that price almost immediately, and I think we also need to authorize the, the transfer station attendant to, to deny any mattresses coming in if we, if we don't have room to store them.
Well, quite frankly, Joe, I think, point-blank, what we need to do is to get the department head in and have a discussion with him about what's going on, like what's taking place, like Chief Jewett did, and he's coming to try to spearhead with his cars, so that we can get ahead of the situation down the transfer station before we run out of money and then possibly have to shut that down. Because right now, I, I, I'm, I'm hearing birds chirping in the background, and I'm afraid that we, we could end up in a very bad place unless we have a sit-down talk with, with him and discuss what's going on, because we've already asked him to put in place, like we have the other department heads, when they think that they're going to run out of money, how soon, and we haven't heard anything from that. So we need to reach out to him, to have him come in.
So just, just to be fair, I think it was like six or seven months ago, he did come in with an updated fee schedule, he wanted to kick up some fees, not this one, not this for mattresses, is, I think we need to see a proposal, and this is an example, just if, and Bob kind of talked about it, is, all the department heads are in a tough position right now financially. So if, if, if I'm any department head and I, I think there's, there's something I need to do to change the way I do business, so I can better, you know, give the town what they need, I would first go to the town administrator with my concerns, and then ask the town administrator to kind of help me with that proposal, and then we can bring the proposal in here, because I, I'm not a fan of the down-in-the-weed stuff during this meeting. I think if, if the department heads come to us with options, like here's, here's my, my one recommendation, my two, three recommendations, then we can approve it, and I think this is a perfect candidate to do something like that.
Well, he, he did say to me, when I was down there, in full fairness, that one of his recommendations might be to shut down taking any bulk items from outside of the town of Newton. But this is what I'm saying, he has not come, talked to the town administrator about it or brought it in as a, as a follow-through.
If I could just jump in, Bob, I, me personally, I, I don't want to discuss any specific employees in this meeting, and I think we're kind of gravitating towards that. I think we've kind of, we've kind of figured out what we need to do, and then the town administrator can talk to the department head, but I don't want to talk specifically about, you know what I mean? So.
I just came up to say exactly what Matt just said, you're treading on very thin water discussing employee performance when you're saying he's doing something or not doing something. Be very careful what you're saying about an employee in a public meeting.
Jim, if he does come to us, I'd like to see the fee schedule from Mellow, who's taking all the trash, right? Is it Mellow?
Yeah, the other end of, I don't think it's all Mellow, but you're saying the other end of-
Whoever's taking the bulk, they have a fee schedule, I'd like to see it, because I cannot, I work with a lot of trash guys, I don't see anybody counting things that are coming out of one of the containers, so I'd like to see the fee schedule. Usually it's just the weight, you know what I mean? And that's why it's separated, because it's all by weight on what's in each one. Construction debris goes in a different one than mattresses does, so I'd just like to see that fee schedule. If he's gonna, if anybody's going to come down with a proposal, I'd like to see that.
And I'm going to add a little bit to that, I don't want to see people being denied or things getting shut down, that's not up to the residents to decide, you know, come in, I've got my stuff, and now you're going to deny me because it's full, or you don't have room? We got to figure that out, so I'd like to-
So I've been smoking image earlier, and my family either they're going to start the road or redock here or something.
Of course, right.
So I don't want the denial, is what I'm saying, if we could avoid- So I don't want the denial is what I'm saying, if we could avoid any of that hassle. I already see when people fly down the road in their pickups and it goes out, so I like to avoid less trash than-
I apologized for that, Mike. I went back and I-
I didn't name names of any employee of Selectmen in this town.
Did you have something else, Joe?
Uh, yeah, the other thing I had, I just want to give you an update on the-
It was Diane in on this topic.
I'm sorry.
Diane is waiting patiently.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So just an FYI, we did update the fees back in October and he didn't, the fees for the Newton resident is six, $50 for any mattress. What it does is we take in more money from the bulk items, from the non-residents to offset it. We also take money out of the, out of his fund there, the recycling fund, to offset this. That's why it's lower. Okay?
Okay.
That's why the fee is lower for town residents because they're already paying for it when they take, when we, because we put the money into that account. Okay? So, so you under, so everybody understands that?
I appreciate the update.
Okay. Yep. Correct. It's a wash, right.
Well, I won't go there with that.
Also, a couple of years ago, I worked with the former town administrator, creating a spreadsheet outlining the fees and the expenses for the transfer station. So perhaps our current town administrator can find that spreadsheet and expand on it for the bulk items.
Do you resent that?
I might be able to find it. All right. But I'm just saying that there may be something that you can at least start with-
Yep.
-to look into what the expenses are versus what the revenue is.
Sure.
Right. Because part of that is, and what keeps coming up is every year we keep shifting money from one account to put it in to help run that transfer station. And I know that account's dwindling. So we're not really offsetting so that everything's on even keel. We're still running at a deficit if that's happening. So that's why we have to look at it.
Thank you, Chairman. The next thing I had, just wanted to give you an update on the Harris Fund. At our last meeting, we had, we had voted to, to have a letter sent to give us permission to ask what this fund is and to talk to somebody. Hadn't heard from the person in over a week, so I called today and she is gonna be, she's in the process of sending me the information as to what the backup is for the account so we know specifically what it is and how much money is in, in there and what it can be used for. I'm bored of following.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Anybody else with any other business? Trish, you said, did I, we overlook something?
It was, it was the previous update.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't skip over it.
You're doing good.
All right. Manifest.
I would, I would move to sign vendor manifest dated April 10th, 2023, in the amount of
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I would also move to sign vendor manifest dated April 10th, 2023, in the amount of 740, or sorry, $74,390.45.
Second. Mr. Guide, all in favor?
Aye.
If you want me to keep you going.
You're on a roll, man.
All right. So I'll move to sign cable revolving fund dated April 10th, 2023, in the amount of
Second. Seconded by Mr. Guide, all in favor?
Aye.
I would move to sign police special details revolving fund dated April 10th, 2023, in the amount of $5,113.80.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Guide, all in favor? Aye.
I would move to sign payroll manifest for pay period March 26th to April 8th, 2023, with a pay date of April 13th, 2023. Total payroll is $71,691.17, which includes $423.74 of ARPA costs.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Guide, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Moving right along. Move to sign veterans' tax credit for Tax Map 13-5-9-1, beginning tax year 2023.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Guide, all in favor? Aye.
Move to sign veterans' tax credit for Tax Map 7-3-1, beginning tax year 2023.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Guide, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tax abatement. Want to move to sign the abatement for Tax Map 7-2-1-24, as recommended by the assessor.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Guide, all in favor?
Aye.